Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Des Moines City Council Meeting for August 22 of 2022. We had a proclamation earlier on the future of agriculture. We now move into our regular meeting, and I will ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Item 16 is withdrawn by the city manager, and regular agenda item 44 is corrected. It's an ordinance.
Move approval.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. We'll move to item three. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 35. This evening, item 28, I am going to recuse myself for an appearance of conflict. Item 29, council member Shoemaker says no. Item 34A, council member Voss wishes to speak. Item 34C, council member Shoemaker votes no. With that...
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I'll ask everybody to vote, please.
Seven yes.
All right. That takes us to our hearing items. We will begin this evening. Just for everybody to know, for the hearing tonight, we have three zoning items. And the zoning items, those are 39 to 41, and we have two vacation hearings, a conveyance hearing, and a public improvement hearing this evening. Reminder, for the zoning only, again, 39, 40, and 41, we will hear from the parties in interest first if they wish to speak, and then the general public. The parties in interest are either the applicant themselves or somebody within 250 feet that has received a notice. After all the parties in interest have commented, we're going to open it up and ask if there are any germane comments from the general public. And to aid in recognizing those, I would ask everyone, please, if you're not, when we call in the parties in interest, and if you're not one, please don't step to the microphone because if you do, and you're compared to the mailing list that was sent out, and you are not on it, we're going to have to pretty much disqualify you for the remainder of the meeting. So after all the parties in interest are called upon, the general public will be asked for germane comments, not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes for all comments on that unless the hearing is ended sooner, either for a failure to make germane comments or there are no comments to be made. For the other hearings this evening, any interested party may make germane comments, not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing unless the hearing is ended sooner for a failure again to make the germane comments. As a reminder, on the public improvement hearings, only comments as to the plans, the specifications, form of documents, and the engineer's estimate in the lowest bidder will be considered germane. All other comments will be considered non-germane. So let's go ahead and get started. Our first item this evening is item 36. Item 36 is on the vacation of a segment of southeast Third Street and East Market Street right-of-way, and to correct the vacation of portions of street and alley right-of-way, all located north of east Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway and west of southeast Sixth Street as a part of the Market District redevelopment project. A is the first consideration in the ordinance above. We'll ask first, are there any germane comments on this item from the general public? And again, anybody? Seeing none?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 36, 36A, and pursuant to rule, 42A. I will waive the second and third reading.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, and I'll ask everyone to vote.
Six yes, one abstain.
All right. That moves us to item 37, is on the vacation of the north-south alley right-of-way, located east of and adjoining 413 Euclid Avenue, and conveyance of Euclid Foresight LLC for $800. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. And we'll ask for any germane comments on this item from the general public. Anyone? Seeing none, could we get a motion?
Make a motion. Item 37, 37A.
I'll second.
Okay. Item 37, A, and pursuant to 42C, we will...
Seven yes.
Item 38 is on the conveyance of excess city-owned property located west of and adjoining 1626 Dixon Street to Liberty Holdings, Inc. for $25,875. Again, we'll open it up for germane comments from the general public. Anyone want to make comments on this? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is J.D. Dalton with the Dalton Law Firm, 2521 128th Street in Urbandale. I'm here to speak on behalf of Liberty Holdings. If I set the screen under this, are we able to project it so you guys can see? Might be helpful if we get the contact. Can you zoom in at all?
Are you able to just like tilt it just a little? Maybe put, no, the screen up above?
There you go.
Okay. Well, it's still better than nothing, but I think it'll help. Am I able to speak here? Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so the site we're talking about tonight is 1626, which is basically, the line starts here, comes down to this corner, and then straight up. That's the ready-mix plant that Liberty Ready-Mix currently holds. And there's actually two separate pieces of ground that are kind of working their way up. One is before you tonight, and then we've been working with city council on another one. What really started it was the east Jefferson vacation. The neighbors to the north have moved to try to vacate this because of the same issues we've been having to the north here, which is illegal dumping of trash and some vagrancy issues. Liberty's actually been maintaining that by mowing it and taking care of it because once the weeds take over that right-of-way, then people tend to think they can just dump on it. So you'll actually be seeing another piece coming before you eventually for this up here, and we're trying to just square this whole section off because Liberty actually owns the ground to the north here, these two lots as well. So that one is relatively simple because there's no additional neighbors to consent to it. You have the pieces before you tonight, which is the western piece. That has already been vacated. That was vacated back in the 90s. And so, working through the real estate department, we're trying to get that transferred and conveyed to Liberty tonight. And then the third piece, which is the last one, I want to wrap up, is this Dixon Court. The reason I'm here to speak tonight is because of state staff. We've been working really close with them, and we've got a very good working relationship there. They indicated it'd be helpful potentially for council, in particular, you, council member Westergaard, about the dust issue. So for permitting for this, Polk County Indoor Air Quality basically gives the ready-mix plant a permit. And so, I believe it was maybe some of the neighbors complained to you, council member, and then you contacted Polk County Air Quality. They've come out. We hired an environmental engineer to come out and do an assessment of the site, and what he determined is the bulk of that dust is actually being generated on Dixon Court. So there's about 100 trucks a day that will come, they'll load here, and then they'll exit the plant through Dixon Court. This is city-owned, a short stub. It's about 7,500 square feet in total. And so, city staff and us agree that it would make the most sense if we're kind of packaging all this up in the bigger vision is to square this up and then ultimately vacate this as well. Now, that's not before you tonight, but I want to kind of give everybody the context of what we're going to try to do to address additional dust issues. So Liberty is willing to actually acquire that from the city and then pay it, pave it as well. I mean, it doesn't really do anything operational for them, but to try to help mitigate some of that additional dust issues that's going to the neighbors, that's probably the biggest thing we can actually do. The plants have dust-proofing systems on the hoppers and the feed systems. They've got mitigation systems. They pay additional sums to bring in washed aggregates, so it's got less dust on it. And we're doing about as much as any ready-mix company can do short of actually paving this. The environmental engineer recommended that they spray some dust suppressant on it, which they've done monthly, but that isn't really working. So our point in speaking tonight is just to give you the bigger picture, what we're trying to do in that whole area. If you were to check with Eric Lund, he'll support this on us, and we're working very close with them. And the goal again, tonight would be, we would ask that you vote to approve the conveyance of this. We will ultimately be in front of the Board of Adjustment for getting this piece up here and this piece, and ultimately, this Dixon Court piece approved as well. I will also tell the city that there's no additional intensive use of this site beyond what's already there. So the ground that you would be conveying, whether it's the piece tonight or the future pieces, it will be conveyed with a restriction against ever being used as a buildable site. So there'll never be a ready-mix plant on it. We're not expanding the use. There's not a bigger facility coming in here. We're essentially just shoring up the boundaries and then trying to mitigate the dust on that piece in the corner. Now, the last comment I would make on that Dixon Court, the little stub at the bottom. So according to current city policy, whenever you have adjacent owners, and one party's moving for vacation of the ground, and you need others to consent. I know everyone knows that, but I want to give you an update on kind of where we're at with that. So the neighbor to the west is the feed store, the nursery. They've essentially communicated to me that they don't have any objection to it provided they get a permit easement access across it as well, which we don't have a problem with. So if Liberty basically acquires this down the road, paves it, we will give these guys a permit, ease it for ingress and egress across as well. So I think that one, they're local. I don't think we're having any issues there. I reached out to the cell tower. So the only other user that's coming in here is this little square right here was actually split off and sold a couple of years ago to a cell tower out on the east coast. And so, I reached out to them at the end of July, told them what we're trying to do to clean this up, and I spoke to their council. He forwarded on, and we have not heard back. So my only comment bringing that up is, I would, if I could get some feedback tonight in talking to the real estate department, we might be kind of at a dead end and getting all the neighbors to consent to it. So the real estate department said if council would give us potentially some direction, either tonight or maybe separately to staff, to have the city initiate the vacation of that as well. Because there's two ways we can do it. We can either do it as property owners, but we've got to get the neighbors to consent. We might have an issue with that cell tower just because they're not responding. And then the other option would be if the city council would just move on that on their own.
Mr. Manager, I'd ask that you try to have staff work and see if they can't get this reconciled. And we've got an item on the agenda for this evening, and I think you made it pretty clear the ones that you have, you're okay with. This is sort of a, for your information...
Right, exactly.
...in what you're doing moving forward. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Yep. Exactly. So if you look at that, if you look at 1543, that's within 100 feet of that gravel road. Yes, Liberty will pay that without any doubt. If that ultimately, if that piece is vacated, Liberty will pay it. Yes. Yes. I mean, so, I mean, if you look at the site, the dust is coming. There's limestone, and that's a limestone rock entryway, and you have 70,000 pound trucks going through there 100 times a day. So... Yeah. Yeah, and Polk County Air Quality said there's really nothing that they, because they're not observing any fugitive dust being generated from the site. It's that access point is what... So yes, you have our commitment that if that ultimately is conveyed, Liberty will pay it at their expense.
Second. Second.
All right, Tim, moved and seconded, but we'll quickly ask if there are any members of the public who would like to, it's all right, any other members of the public. All right, seeing none. It's been moved and seconded. Ask everyone to vote.
Seven yes.
All right. Takes us to item 39. Item 39 is a request from Rolloffs of Des Moines, Inc., Anthony and Gregory S. Holt are the owners, to correct rezoning of property in the vicinity of 20 East 18th Street from I-2 Industrial District to a limited I-2 Industrial District to allow a junk or salvage yard use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by Anthony Holt. So let's go ahead and ask if there are any parties in interest here who would like to speak. That would either be the applicant. All right. Are you representing or are the applicant? Okay, good.
Anthony Holt, 20 East 18th. This is just a correction that didn't get added at our last council meeting, so we thank you all for what you do.
All right, Anthony, thank you. All right. All right, we'll ask anyone else from the general public.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 39A and B.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Ask everyone to vote.
Seven, yes.
Item 40 is on a request from Drake Neighborhood Association. Lori Calhoun is the officer to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from medium-density residential to park open space and to rezone the property located in the vicinity of the 2,400 block of Cottage Grove Avenue to P-1 Public Civic and Institutional District to allow the development of an open space with a garden, swing, and neighborhood entrance sign. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. So let's go ahead. Are there any parties in interest? Anyone who lives in the vicinity or the applicant? Seeing none, are there any other parties in general public to make germane comments?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 40, A and C.
All right.
Is it C or B?
It's supposed to be B, yes.
B, A and B.
Something happened there.
All right.
Second.
Got it, move in a second.
It's a real nice addition to their neighborhood, by the way. The swings are getting used a lot, so...
Seven, yes.
Item 41. It's on a request from Mercy Hospital Medical Center. Diane Cummings is the officer for review and approval of the Eighth Amendment to the Mercy Hospital Center PUD Conceptual Plan located at 1111 Sixth Avenue to allow modifications to the western parking ramp area. So let's ask, are there any parties in interest, either the applicant or anyone within that 250 feet? Seeing none, is there anyone from the general public who would like to speak regarding this Mercy Hospital review?
Seeing none, I'll move item 41.
Second.
Item 41 has been moved and seconded.
Seven, yes.
Item 42 is on the 2022 HMA Reservicing Program Contract 1, Resolution approving Plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as OMG Midwest, Inc., doing business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving. Kevin Bragg is the president, $1,489,296.25, Council Communication Number 22-380. A is an approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. And we'll ask now from the general public, if anybody would like to make any comments on the plans, the specifications, the form of the documents, the engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation. And we'll give those individuals a minute each to speak.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 42, 42A.
42 and 42A have been moved and seconded.
Seven, yes.
All right. That completes our hearings at 5:19. Takes us back to item 34A, I believe. 34A is purchases from the following. A is an exception to the procurement ordinance, competitive bidding requirement for good cause, and approving a procurement of a portable, single-sided, 17-foot-by-10-foot LED movie screen and trailer in supplemental agreement with Insane Impact LLC for use by the Parks and Recreation Department, Council Communication Number 22-377, Council Member Voss.
Yes, thank you. I'll be brief. I really appreciate this purchase of the trailer, which will allow Parks and Rec to show movies in the park at earlier hours instead of waiting until nine o'clock or darkness. So it's earlier showings, it's a high-quality LED screen. It will require just one or two Parks and Rec employees to set it up rather than four or five that it requires now. Buying from a local vendor in Waukees, and this is just an outstanding example of public and private coming together, city funds, Prairie Meadows grant, Friends of Des Moines Parks, and several individuals who contributed to buy this screen. So with that, I'd like to move this 34A.
Second.
All right, 34A's been moved and seconded. All right, takes us now to item 43. Item 43 is labeled the expenditures of the ARPA funds. I just want to thank all of our citizens who have participated in all of the input regarding the expenditure, and manager to you and your staff for all the efforts that you have taken, not only input from those of us sitting up here on the dais with you, but listening to all the input that we've gotten in all the meetings around town and through all the various means that we've gotten. Certainly, we have looked at an awful lot of things about public health issues, broadband, water and sewer, equity-focused services, negative economic impact, and some loss during the pandemic of our public sector funding. So I want to thank everybody for that, and with that, I'll ask council any other comments.
Good, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
Make a couple of comments. Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification for the public, this is the final allocations of the remaining 95 million that the city's receiving. Mentioned that it's, the funding came directly from the U.S. Treasury, another advantage of this funding, but that there are a couple of those allocations that will still have further discussion. The affordable housing category and the childcare preschool education aspects will both have further conversation to further divide that money down into actual recipients. I just wanted to add that comment for the public record as well.
All right.
I'd like to move this.
I would like to make a comment, if that's all right. I am happy with a lot of the commitments that we've made in here, specifically on the affordable housing, on solar trees. I'm happy that a lot of it is going to be going to low and moderate income census tracts. Obviously, I'm not going to be happy with everything, and that's the nature of compromise and the fact that, you know, there's multiple voices up here and multiple voices trying to get things for the city and what they believe is the right way to do that. And so I think that we've achieved something with that. I did want to talk about some of the things that I don't think that we addressed, and there was a group called the People's Budget Coalition that came together last December when the public meetings were being had about the ARPA funds, and we had a list of demands or suggestions of how the city should spend their ARPA funds. And they were based on the eligible uses, which was to respond to public health emergency or the negative economic impacts, respond to workers performing essential work, and those were the main two that we went off of. The rest of them were just provision of government services and investments in some infrastructure. But going off of the first two eligible uses, we felt that stimulus and survival grants should be a priority. We didn't get anything for that. An excluded worker fund should be a priority, and we didn't get anything for that. Housing support we did get. We specified homelessness and houselessness support, rent relief, public housing repairs, and upkeep, and as we're having further discussion, I think those can be some things that we focus on. It's something that I'll be focusing on. Publicly-owned utilities was something that we would not have enough money in the budget for ARPA to address. Public transit we didn't address. Temporary food stamps we didn't address. Funding schools maybe wasn't something that was under our purview, and then water quality issues we also didn't address. So I think there are a lot of things that we left out, and these are things that we should, moving forward, consider as we continue discussing with the ARPA funds, and with that, I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other comment? Ask your bond to vote. Item 44, an ordinance first consideration, amending Chapter 114, Article 16, Division 9, by repealing and reenacting parts relating to traffic and vehicle regulations. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the engineering department and requires six votes. Counsel, any comment amending Chapter 114, Article 16?
I'll move item 44 and 44A, Your Honor.
Seven, yes.
All right, that moves us to our public speaking part of our agenda. For those wishing to speak this evening that have all announced and asked, we have, it looks like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven on for this evening. Each of the speakers are going to receive up to two minutes each to make their comments. We want you to all keep your own time because at the end of the two minutes, the clerk will announce time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we will be moving immediately to the next speaker. We want to hear from our residents, and we encourage residents to be respectful of others' viewpoints, which may be different from their own. While you may certainly disagree with that viewpoint, I want to remind everyone that the council's rules provide that any comments that are slanderous will result in that speaker being barred from further comment. As the presiding officer, I will determine whether those comments are slanderous or not. And fair warning, arguing with a presiding officer about those determinations on any matter is not permitted, and doing so will be considered disruptive and result in the speaker being barred from further comments and asked to leave the building. Any rate, let's start in. Our first speaker this evening is R.J. Miller.
R.J. Miller, Ward 1. Today, I would like to talk about, first off, I think we need to invest in the east side. We need a community resource center for the youth over there. I've noticed, being on the west side, we have some things. On the east side, we really don't have any resources. Also, Mayor County, I emailed you like two weeks ago. I have yet to receive any email back from you, as well as any of the other council people. Hopefully, you guys can check your emails and get back to me. I wanted to propose, what the hell is that? I wanted to, okay, my bad. I wanted to, I wanted to propose for us to be able to do a community forum with the youth, essentially to be able to have the youth who are at risk and to have the people that are in these street tribes to be able to have a conversation with you and the chief of police on ways that we can collectively come together to reduce the violence within our community. Because as we've been seeing, we've been seeing an uprising in shootings, murders, robberies, and all these other different things. And as I see it, we have a lot of community people running around with the microphone in their hands, singing the same old song that they've been singing for the past 15-some years. I think it's about time that y'all pass that microphone to the youth and let the youth tell their story, how they see it through their own eyes. Because one of the things that, as a constituent, that I don't like from the council and from other people that are in the community, a lot of people are telling the youth what they need. I think we should shut our mouths, and we should pass the microphone to the youth, ask them what they need, and we should organize and address that according to their needs. So that's pretty much all I've got. 2021, you guys did a horrible job as far as getting back to your constituents. You guys are still doing that. I would say that you guys need to work on that, you know? That's one of the, that's one of the things about the youth. You guys never want to listen until there's a pistol down somebody's throat. It should never get to that point to where you want to listen. You should listen now. African proverb, "The child who is not embraced by the village will burn the village down to fill its worm." And that's what you're seeing going around. The youth are pissed off, and they're running around destroying everything around them.
I'd like to express my interest in a community town hall. Is that someone's alarm on their phone? Good timing. I would like to express interest in a town hall with the youth for the whole council and with the police chief as well.
Okay, so noted. As everyone knows, we have set out to reestablish our youth advisory council, and I've been talking as a follow-up to the email that I received regarding that. I'm not quite sure where we are on that, but I think we're moving forward, and of course, we have the Cure Violence Initiative that's going, and I think we need to get some feedback on that. I know they've been working hard with youth and youth groups. So, Mr. Manager, I would ask that you take a look and see what, how we're moving forward, and maybe give us a update back to the council, and I think we need to hear back from the Cure Violence, the youth advisory, and then discuss whether or not, as Indira pointed out, where we go from here. Our next speaker is Lori Ann Young. Lori Ann Young.
She's not here.
We moved too fast. Can she speak at the end?
Our next speaker is Carrie Gosnell.
My name is Carrie Gosnell. I use she/her pronouns. I live on Ward 3 and am a member of Iowa's CCI Racial Justice Team and DSM Serge. The Iowa's CCI Racial Justice Team has been working for many years to create a safer Des Moines, one that makes all who live here feel safe, not just people who look like me. Admittedly, I was not always on this journey with them, but I feel very fortunate that this group has welcomed me into the work. For several years, I ignored the experiences of black residents. I was taught as a child that police are a safe place to turn to, and I always trusted them. Over time, that trust has been tarnished by the stories of so many of my black and brown friends, and I finally realized that this problem has always been around me. I just hadn't opened my eyes to it. I want to be a part of a safer, better Des Moines, but just like I was ill-equipped to see its problems, I'm completely ill-equipped to fix the problem myself. I cannot possibly know which direction to take without the guidance of the very people whose lives are impacted every day. I joined the racial justice team because I saw them listening to the stories of everyday people, building connections with other organizations across the metro, and working directly with members of this council. Unfortunately, there are still some of you who continue to work behind closed doors without us. Frankly, I'm pretty sure some of you just don't like our group. That's okay. You don't have to like us, but you're going, but are you going to be the reason why real change cannot happen in the city? Building community and acting change is not easy. It requires us all to admit when we are wrong, take decisive action to prevent those wrongs from happening again in the future. It requires transparency about how we're operating, and you cannot create lasting change in a bubble. We have an opportunity to build a future we want by implementing the recommendations of a public works study and by taking a good, hard look at our past. Please don't waste this opportunity.
Our next speaker is Sam Davis.
Hello, I'm on Southwest 2nd. I don't even know I'm in your Ward 4. First of all, I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. It's pretty easy. All I have to do is go online, fill out some information, and I don't think any of you guys knew I was coming before I got here. However, I have been trying to reach the, go in front of the Traffic and Safety Committee on September 13th. They won't let me. I'm part of the McKinley neighborhood. I'm actually the one who found the typo that got... I'm actually the one who found the typo that got us kicked out of the neighborhood. So, we're talking about, sorry, I'm rambling. My neighborhood is very unsafe. I have talked a lot about it. I've tried to get things happening, and then everybody keeps sending me to the engineering department. Because I don't have an official neighborhood association until whatever McKinley comes back in, that I wanted to find out how to get a traffic calming study. I've been trying to reach the engineering department, and instead of letting me be on the agenda, I just, I kept asking, "Hi, will someone please let me know the process to be added to next month's transportation safety committee?" They will not respond. Instead, I get a response of somebody else speaking for me, which is just saying a bunch of slanderous stuff, because I have talked to the engineering department before. But the problem with the safety committee is the person who holds the magic key to let, to see who's going to be on the agenda is also on the board. And I don't think that's right. I think it should be easy for me to find out. I want to see what I need to do to get a traffic calming study done, like if I have to, what I need to do, but they're not getting back to me. So meanwhile, I started parking in the street, and that's kind of slowed things down, but we have a 22-foot street with forklifts, semi trucks, bicycles, and it's a ditch on both sides. It's so scary. And we also have daycare kids. So I'm just trying to, whatever, I'm trying to make it safer to live there, and like I said, I've been kicked out.
Are you looking for a traffic study on Indianola Road or a traffic study on the street you live on?
Around the area. My, I, I want to know the process, and he says, I mean, I can give you.
Indianola Road or the street?
I'm on Southwest Second.
Yeah, I'm familiar where you're at.
I know, but I don't think, I'm fine to share the email. I don't think it's against anything. It doesn't say I can't share it. Can I give this to you if you want to? I mean, I'm just like, all I'm doing is asking me hi.
Yep.
Is that okay?
I think she knows.
Yes, I don't, but he won't tell me the policy. And it's, so that's what I'm saying. Instead, he's telling me what I'm going to be there for and that he can't help me.
Scott, would you have a staff member?
Please.
Kind of talk to her and see what we can do.
That would be great.
Do you want to hand me this or anything?
All right.
We're going to have a staff member reach out to you and share the policy again.
All right, thank you. Let's move on. Viola Perry.
Mayor, city council members, city manager, Viola Perry, CCI Racial Justice Team, 50310, Ward 1. At the last city council meeting, I spoke with you, City Manager Sanders, about the absence of the third-party independent investigation of the DMPPD not being on the agenda. You informed me of two groups you were looking at, Perth and 21st Century Policing under the Obama administration. Now with that said, we, the community, want transparency with this investigation, with a timeline and follow-through on recommendations that would be made public. I say this because of the Ethos Study you said you did earlier in the year and which you said would survey each city department to investigate the current climate for each department. We had requested the result of that study, and nothing was ever shared with the community. CCI Racial Justice Team and other groups in the community brought this issue of racial profiling before you, city council, more than four years ago. We have remained diligent and persistent to stand for true and impactful change in our community. Moving forward, as city leaders, we expect the lines of communication between us, you, and the community to remain open and transparent. That is how trust is built. Again, we started this a long time ago because of the unfair treatment of Black and Brown people living in this community. Do you understand? You have a chance to finally help get it right for all people? If not, we're here to tell you, you can make a difference, and we are in hopes that is your full intent.
Laal Moani. Laal Moani. Dell Marion.
Why don't you let her speak? Lori.
Lori, go ahead, step up.
Sorry, I'm late. Thank you for your kindness tonight. Good evening, council members. I'm Lori Young. I'm a resident of Ward 1, a member of Iowa CCI's Racial Justice Team, and the communications director for nonprofit Just Voices Iowa. Yesterday at my church, Corinthian Baptist, our pastor gave the simplest definition of righteousness I've ever heard. Thinking it was something I would never really obtain, my mind has now changed. He said righteousness is doing the right thing for the right reasons. That's it, simple. I'm asking you to do the right thing for the right reasons. It's past time to take meaningful steps to create a plan to implement the 23 recommendations made to our city by Public Works LLC way back in May. We paid over $80,000 for their study of our Des Moines police. Their sound and clear recommendations will go a long way in improving public safety for all residents. It's time to plan and prioritize their recommendations. In fact, I would challenge you even further. How about publishing monthly progress reports online showing steps being made toward making these meaningful changes? We need to increase accountability and transparency by taking intentional actions. Our Des Moines Police Department can be better. The report by Public Works was quite revealing and a bit embarrassing, but at least it was truthful in its findings. Scott Sanders, as city manager, I need you to champion the implementation of their recommendations. City council, as elected officials, I need you to hold Manager Sanders accountable. Taking on the recommendations made by Public Works is the right thing to do for the right reasons. We can have equity in policing, improved community trust and partnership, and stronger, more effective public safety for all Des Moines residents of all races. Do the right thing, please, and do it now.
I'll read one more time. Laal Moani. Dell Marion.
Well, it's, my name is Dell Marion. I live in West Des Moines, Iowa. I've been here in Iowa now for 32 years. And 2006 was the last time that I was in the chamber here. So, Mayor, thank you so much for this proclamation that you provided to my family and my son. And I haven't been here since then, but you gave us something, and hopefully today, I'm going to give you, give the council something. First of all, I have a tremendous concern for our city, our state, and our country. But also, too, I'm going to bring a potential solution to help reduce my concerns, and I think I will also reduce you all's concerns as well. Two bullet points that I want to talk about today. The police department, the supportive police departments, and also our schools, the bullying and drugs that are happening in our schools, not only in Des Moines, but throughout the entire state and throughout the entire country. And I also, too, want to emphasize that we need a sense of urgency. So I'm going to piggyback a little bit on some of the other speakers in terms of some of their concerns, but I also feel, too, that right in front of you all, which I'm going to share with you all, since I only have two minutes, actually, I thought this was going to be at the beginning, I'm going to leave a copy of this for you all who would like to have a copy. My son, who is a graduate of Iowa State, has a degree in, and has been in marketing, has created, we feel, a solution that has been enforced now for the last five or six years. And not only are we in front of Des Moines, but we are also throughout the entire state. We've talked to the governor as well, and we've also been to other cities, too. So what I'd like to do, only if you all are interested, I'd like to leave you a copy of this because it would kind of explain a little bit in terms of who we are for some of you all who don't know who we are. But right now, I personally feel it's time to save our country, save our city, save our state. And the platform is the Inclusive Culture University, ICU. So I will conclude my time. So for those that would like to have a copy of this, and if this is at the conclusion, please see me for a copy. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to receiving files, 45A through J.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Ask your one to vote.
Seven, yes.
And with that, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Did we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
I'll second.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none? This means adjourned. Want to thank you all for attending, and thank you for your input.